Roll call vote, please.
Jesse Wells.
Here.
Jesse Lawson.
Here.
Jesse Marquez. Vice President Diaz-Slocum.
Present.
President McAvoy.
Present. All right. Well, welcome, everyone. Bienvenidos si necesita interpretación en español, por favor busca. Busque la información in el chat. Welcome, everyone, to the December 15th Redwood City School Board Meeting. Thank you all for being here. I've posted links in the chat for the agenda as well as how to sign up to make comments. And if you would like to speak to the board, you may have up to three minutes on your item. If your item is not in the agenda, you'll be called on during oral communication. And if your item's on the agenda, you'll be called on when that item is addressed. And I think I'll just leave it at that. It looks like most of our attendees are our regulars. I think you've heard the spiel about a board meeting and that sort of thing. Anyway, welcome, everyone. It's nice to see everyone. For my last meeting as board president for the next year, so that's great. All right. And so our next item on the agenda is the board officers' rotation per our bylaws. We rotate every year. And our new president will be my wonderful colleague, Maria Diaz-Slocum. And the vice president will be Cecilia Marquez. And clerk will be, I think that's Janet, right? Janet Lawson. And the secretary will be Mike Wells. Oh, you're going to get the fun. Is that right? What are you shaking your head?
The superintendent secretary. I think I'm the, I go to the district organization committee.
Yeah, he's the, he's the governing board representative to Samathea County. You see that there?
Okay, you're right. You're right. Okay. Right. The clerk is the one who has the minutes. Never mind. Okay, sorry, sorry. That's funny. Okay, so there's, yeah, I don't know why the secretary's there. Okay, trustee representative to Samathea County Committee on School District Organization. And I will move into the legislative network. All right, so we don't even have to have a motion to approve this because it's just part of our bylaws. We do it naturally.
Part of board policy, yes.
Part of board policy. Yep. And then I believe Maria has asked me to preside over the meeting today. You can go ahead.
Yes, I have. But before we continue, I just want to take a moment. As they say in CSBA, what is that, a privilege?
You're the president, madam, madam president. Take it over.
You're still presiding. So I just wanted to say thank you, Elisa, for guiding us this year. It's been a challenging year for everybody, and I wanted to say thank you very much. You have taken over from Janet, who was a master in whiz at all this technology. And, you know, kept us going and on track. And through all of the issues, you've been there. You've been responsive to the parents. So I appreciate all you have done this year for us. And as a gift from the board, you know, we're having virtual cake. So I'll be sending that to you guys. There goes. But we did get together and we made a contribution to Family Connections in your name. Because I know that's one of the organizations that you care deeply about. And I also want to say thank you to the rest of the colleagues as well. Janet, Mike, and Cecilia for their insights and their contributions as well. Each and every one of you has a different way of bringing out what is best in everyone and working for the whole of the district and our students. And John and his staff, you're not forgotten. You guys are superheroes. This has been a year of so much extra work for you all. And I just want to say thank you. You are appreciated. You have done the big, heavy lifting. And I am just so grateful that all of you have stayed with us and continue to guide us and do what needs to be done. So thanks again for all your contributions.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak before I do?
I don't think I could say it better than Maria did. And so I'll just quickly say I totally agree. Thank you, everyone. It's been a wonderful first year for welcoming me and answering, humoring my questions as I'm learning through the process. And just, you know, supporting me to be part of what, what it feels like a team. So this is, this is great. I appreciate it. But, but thank you, Maria. You said wonderful words and you thanked everybody well. And so I echo those wholeheartedly.
And I will echo Mike's echo as well. But yeah, Elisa, you were actually board president my first year on the board as well. And really took me under your wing, which I appreciated. And I just want to say thank you for leading us this year. You've done a fantastic job with the virtual meetings. I know it's not easy. And you've done just a really, really great job with that. So thank you. And I appreciate all of your work, not just with our district, but with CSBA in general. You are a wealth of knowledge. And we just really appreciate having you on the board and all that you bring for that. And to the staff, you know, Elisa and I had a policy meeting with Wendy this week. And we were talking about, Elisa asked Wendy, actually, if she felt a little bit more relaxed going into this holiday season than, than last year. Because it was so hard on all of you guys. We're still in the go-go-go mode. And so I hope that all of you are able to take some time during the holiday break to relax and just get away and focus on your families and yourselves before coming back in January. So thank you and Dr. Baker, too. I hope you're, you're going to get some rest this holiday break, too.
Very good. I think we've heard from everyone. But Elisa, I would like to take this time to thank you for your leadership this year. As everyone has indicated, it has not been an easy, an easy year. We continue to move in different directions with the pandemic. And I want to definitely give you kudos for your work in CSBA and for carrying through when obstacles are in our, in front of us. And we have, I have somebody to go to that can go directly to CSBA and say, this is what's happening in Redwood City. We would like you to really notice this. The same thing as part of your leadership in moving forward and meeting with the Samathea County School Boards Association and being very active. And also being very active with the County Office of Education with Superintendent McGee and attending those meetings and voicing your concerns and voicing what support is needed for our schools. So I totally admire your enthusiasm, your tenacity, your persistence to get out there and make things better and to really support the, the school dis- not only our school district, but all school districts in the county and the state. So keep it up because, you know, we're still in this pandemic. Don't know, you know, we hear things, you know, possibly that could occur, but we won't know until, you know, we get back from winter break. But thank you so much for all your hard work and your support during your year of being the president of the board. And Cabinet has a small gift for you, so maybe you'd like to open that up. I know you came by and picked it up.
Yeah, I picked it up, I think, just yesterday, right, from Eliana. It was in a beautiful package. I decided to open it right before the meeting, so it would save us all time. First of all, I got a really sweet card from all the cabinet members. And I really appreciate it, what heartfelt words you said. And this will be great for those days where you need a little uplifting. And so I will cherish this always. So thank you very much for your kind words. And then I got this beautiful clock that I haven't had a chance to put the battery in yet because I literally just opened it up. So I don't know if you can see it. It's kind of see-through, but it basically says, Elisa McAvoy, School Board President, December 2020 to December 2021. So this is lovely. Thank you so much. I will put it on my desk. Know the time. Yeah, and I just, I just want to say thank you to all my colleagues, first of all. I really feel like we are so fortunate. We have such a wonderful board. And we've had a lot of hard things to work on this year. And I feel like we've done it with respect and thoughtfulness and really tried to listen to each other and make the best decisions we can for our community, for our school district. As we have in our title, which is trustee, so we're trustees for this amazing community. And Dr. John Baker, our fearless leader, thank you so much. You've been such a big part of our collaboration. And certainly you've had the hard job of working with all our staff and parents and families and community to really make the vision happen, right, to keep everything going. So thank you so much. I mean, we really, boy, everything from, you know, equity to getting kids back. You know, just one vision after another, and you're such a leader in the county. So really appreciate it so much. And thank you to all of the staff, the panelists who are here tonight, all the friendly faces we get to see almost every week or every other week together. I really appreciate everything that you do. And I was thinking, you know, reflecting upon this the last couple of days and just how, you know, fortunate our community is to have amazing leadership at all levels. I mean, our administrators, our school leaders, and then our teachers who go into the classroom every day, who care about kids so deeply. And then all of our classified staff and, and all the other support staff that just kind of keep the engine running, you know, everything from our libraries to our custodians, to the food service workers, bus drivers, you name it. You know, it's just, and all our facilities, folks, of course. Talk about the bond of facilities just about every meeting. So thank, thank you, everyone. It's been a real honor to, to serve this last year. And I will say, after this meeting, I'm looking forward to Maria's wonderful leadership and being more of a participant. So anyway, thanks, everybody. Really appreciate it. And Owen, thank you for the donation to Family Connections. That's great. Okay, so Owen, enjoy your virtual cake on Maria. Alrighty, so I think we're on to changes to the agenda. And it sounds like we could move 12.1, 12.4 to consent. I don't know if people had any comments or conversation around 12.3, which is the retirement incentive. That could also go to consent. It's up to you, board. Okay.
Sounds fine. Yeah, sounds fine to me.
Okay, so we'll move 12.1, 3, and 4 to consent. And then, of course, leave the budget. So we'll have some time to talk about the budget, which is always important. Do I have a, oh, and I think that's, I think that's about it. Yeah. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
I'll second.
A roll call vote, please.
Jesse McAvoy.
Yes.
Jesse Wells.
Hi.
Jesse Lawson.
Hi.
Vice President Marquez. President Diaz-Slocum.
Hi.
So funny, I almost said present. And then I was like, wait, what am I supposed to say for the affirmative? That's right. I'm used to following you guys. Okay, I, that's great. Okay, let's see. So oral communication, let me just double check. We didn't have anything earlier today, but nope. Okay, so no oral communication. So bond, bond program update.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Can you guys see my screen? So since the last time I presented the full program project progress tracking matrix, we have gotten DSA certification on Hoover, as shown in yellow here, and DSA certification on Roy Cloud. So you can see by the almost fully grayed out tracking matrix that we're getting near the end. We have our three big projects still in progress. Orion Alternative, Garfield, and Taft. And that's the full update for our full site modernization and new construction projects. Of course, we always have, you know, anywhere from 10 to 20 small projects going in the background. For our construction progress photo update. Do you guys see the photo update title page?
Yes.
Okay, great. This is a recap of the completed Clifford site. And these photos, you can see solar, new asphalt, and the new outdoor learning center between the two wings. This is the new Clifford M U V backup generator. Recap of Garfield, school's new paint in the front, and the new front parking lot progress. And then the completed. This was what I showed of Garfield last update. This is now, as of this week. Let's see, we're making good progress. Photo of the back of the building. A couple of photos that Dawn took in the field. Recap of the completed Hoover Gym. Front and back. Inside. This is the photo I showed last update of the Kennedy School Parking Lot Expansion. This is the area where our offices used to be. This is it now. So the, the additional parking is complete. Another angle. And then the full completed new, new admin and parking areas at Kennedy. This is the photo I showed last update of Orion Alternative. This is it now. So you can see we're making good progress. Another angle. This was the previous update. And this is us now. You can see the buildings are really, really taking form, coming together and starting to get some finishes. Really cool pictures that Dawn took early in the morning. Gives you an alternate perspective of the Orion Alternative buildings. Recap of the Roosevelt School Stair mural. It turned out so well. The Roy Cloud School New M U V Backup Generator. The photo I showed of half last update. This is it now. As you can see, Taft is furthest along of our three big two-story new construction. Starting to get paint and color and really starting to take its final form. This is the update I gave last. Now. Some additional photos Dawn got from ground level. Inside and out. View from the street. And then this is the new Taft Parking Lot that's starting to take form as well. And that's all I've got for you guys today. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you, guys.
Actually, Will, so when do we expect to be done with the construction? Particularly, you know, Taft, Garfield, Orion.
Yes, so Taft will be the first one completed first quarter of 2021 or 2022, sorry. I believe we're trying to deliver the building in February of 2022. And then John Gill and Garfield will follow quarter two of 2022. You know, supply chains, COVID, other impacts have created some small delays. But we're, we're looking at around May of 2022 for those two sites. And we're pushing as hard as we can, trying to find ways to improve on our schedules as they get extended by, you know, lead times and other issues. But we're working through it and we're really excited to, you know, deliver the completed program next year.
Thanks. I could see the chart you showed at the beginning, but it was just a little hard to read on my little screen. So appreciate the update. That's amazing, isn't it? So we'll have to have some kind of celebration at the end of the school year then. And I know a few community members were asking about, you know, hey, when can we have a tour of all the new, new buildings and everything? So anyway, you don't need to think about that now. You need to finish construction. But maybe we can collectively.
Absolutely. We can't. We're getting really excited. Dawn, is there anything you want to add? Okay.
He's looking, oh, no.
I think.
You're looking for the mute.
Three screens going. Good luck trying to find my unmute button. No, I think it's just, it is really exciting. It's really exciting to, to get to the point that we know we see the, the end coming and, and what we have done for these students and the community of Redwood City is just amazing. So, yeah, we were, we're all smiles.
Well, you really should be. You guys have just hit it out of the park, you know.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Elisa.
All right. Well, thanks for the update. Love the photos and everything. Yeah, everybody's clapping, all the panelists. Okay, let's see. So we're on to the bond program consent items. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that's Janet. And then Mike, roll call vote, please.
Jesse McAvoy.
I.
Jesse Wells.
Hi.
Jesse Lawson.
Hi.
Vice President Marquez. President Diaz-Slocum.
Hi.
Great. And I will say that, I should have said this beginning, but Vice President Marcus Cecilia, she, the reason she's not here tonight is her daughter is getting her master's graduation celebration, you know, some kind of ceremony. So she wanted to be here, but needed to be there, wanted to be there. So just for the audience, I wanted to let you know that, that we're all very proud of her daughter and her family. So, okay, let's see. So, oh, we're on to discussion items. So we have the presentation regarding potential trustee area revisions.
Yes, we do. And so Kyle, I don't see Josh Chisholm yet.
Let me take a look.
I don't see him either.
I'm looking and I don't.
No, and he and, and Bill both confirmed that they received panelists' intentions.
Yeah, I saw that. I saw that. So I don't see either of them.
Wonder if they got hung up on, you know, they go from board meeting to board meeting, probably.
And I know William was going to be possibly a few minutes late. So I said, don't worry about it because it would probably be, I estimated maybe 7:15, I said, but you know, it could be as close to 7:30, which it, which it is. But I thought Josh would have been here already.
Well, one option, if it's okay with everybody, we could come back to this item. Is that okay to do? Yeah.
Yeah.
Even though.
Right.
Okay, so we'll delay the discussion item.
William just.
Never mind.
William's here.
I mean.
So, William?
Yes, good evening. Sorry about that.
No, thank you, William. Thank you. Josh is not here yet. Do you know anything in regard to that, his, his timing or constraints?
I do not, but I can reach out to him right now and let you know.
So what we can do is we can go on to another agenda item and come back to it?
Yes, I think that would make sense, and I'll reach out to him in the meantime.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, great. We'll go on to consent items, number 11. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Okay, Maria made the motion. Janet seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Jesse McAvoy.
I.
Jesse Wells.
Hi.
Jesse Lawson.
Hi.
Vice President, Vice President Marquez. President Diaz-Slocum.
Hi.
Great. And as a reminder, we did move 12.1, 3, and 4 over to consent. So we are on to the budget. Priscilla and Dr. Baker.
Right.
Or Priscilla. This is your show.
I'm excited to share with you the first interim report, so I'm going to share my screen. Okay, can you see this?
Yes.
I'm gonna make it bigger, so. So I'm going to present to you the first interim financial report for the district with a positive certification. But before that, you know, there are a few slides that I wanted to share with you regarding our student population. So this month, we, we got the latest demographic study from our consultant Decision Insight. And so they are showing a steady decline in student population for the district for the next 10 years. So this is the moderate version. There is also a conservative version that was presented to us. But for purposes of course interim, we've used the moderate version. So the conservative version would show a deeper decline in student population for us. So for example, in the moderate in 2022, it's 6,204. If we use the conservative version, it's 6,123. And the following year would be 5,0833. While here in moderate, it's 5,992. So the reason why we're using the moderate version is it's, the fiscal impact using the moderate version is more conservative for us. We can see, we can project better. Are we going to continue to become basic aid? Or will there be any change? If we use the conservative version, it's automatic. We're going to be basic aid. But is that the reality for us? So we took the moderate version for our projection. So the next slide is actual. So I just show you the, the projections. But this one is the actuals for the past 11 years using from 2010-11. So you'll see the steady decline. This is not new to you, but it's just very interesting to me how our decline is. From 2010-11, we have 9,119 actual enrollment for that fiscal year. And we're down to 6,392. This is also actual in yellow. This is the one that we just had on October of this year. And this is our actual enrollment count. So from 2010-11, that's a drop of 2,727 students or 30% decline. So this one, I just, you may have already also read the article that this steady decline in enrollment is also happening statewide. I think LA County dropped by 20%. So for us from 2010-11, that's a 30% drop. And this one for the 2022, 23, and 23, 24, we're using the moderate projection from Decision Insight. So the next slide is just the comparison of actual attendance of students in class. We have 180 days instructional days. So not every day the students are present, but our attendance rate has been kind of consistent at 95 to 96%. There has not been change. So you can see from here that it's a similar pattern from, for the past several years. You'll see this kind of anomaly here also in the 1920 and 2021. That this is when the state waived the reporting requirements for 2020, 2021 due to COVID. So it became static. So LCFF-funded districts are funded at the 1920 level, except that if they have a growing population that will give them higher funding, then they have an option to, to submit their actual attendance. But if they're declining, it's beneficial to them to use the 1920 level. So, so you'll see that a little pinch in there in this chart. So the next one is enrollment by school site. And this is current year, 21 to 22. So the next one is enrollment by school site, and this is current year 21 to 22 based on actual count. So, so the, the, in terms of population Hoover is our largest district, followed by Kennedy and Clifford and Roosevelt. And of course, this little tiny item here is for the non-public school. This is our special ed students that does not go to our schools, but goes to a non-public school. And there's about 12 of them for this year. So now moving forward on assumptions that we've used for first interim, most of these assumptions and percentages that we're using are from the state's enacted budget for 21, 22. Some are local decisions that we made based on trends, historical trends. So for the LCFF-funded district, this is built into the calculator. So for the 21, 22, the state augmented, they call it the augmented COLA, because in 21, 22, if they just follow the regular cost of living adjustment, the rate here would have been 1.7%. And this are the regular COLA. So they augmented it and bumped it up to give LCFF-funded districts more money for 21, 22. So this is kind of the, something that we are watching for 22, 23, because we've heard that the state of California is flush with CAS due to revenue surpluses from, from the quarterly reporting. So there's a lot of money. So we're waiting, how are they going to distribute that money? Because if it will again be embedded in the LCFF calculator, then basically a district like us will not benefit from that surpluses. So we're watching that. We will know more in January when the governor releases its projection for next year. For, for our basic aid property taxes, if you recall during the budget adoption, our assumption is 2% on the secured only, secured property tax component only. So for this first interim, we made that change because we already have the information at P1. And so the growth in P1 is a little over 2%. It's like 2.38, which is not kind of the trend that we have for the past several years. Our average for the past seven or 10 years is 7.5. But the last two years, beginning in 1920 and 2020, 2021, and the P1 of this year, it's a lower percentages. And I think it's mainly because of the two court cases that have been settled, which impact the distribution of property taxes. Because when I was looking at the assessed value of properties in Redwood City, there is no change. It's actually growing, but the actual distribution of taxes got lower because of the Chula Vista case and the Department of Finance case. So we're assuming conservatively, again, 2% each year on the total, not on just secured taxes. So the, the rates for lottery restricted, those are included in the enacted budget. Mandated block grants is also from the state. For the federal and state local funding, we're assuming flat funding for that. And it does not really have an impact on the bottom line because they're usually restricted programs. And we budget usually the total revenue and the total expenditure for it. So on the right side is the expenditure assumption. So for compensation increase in 21, 22, our salary schedules are already included, the 4% settlement for RCTA and RCA, CSEA is not settled yet for 2021 and 21, 22. Future years, there's no compensation increase included in this budget, but just the 1.5% of step on column adjustment. So for medical insurance for health and welfare, the assumption is the same, it's 5%. The, the, one of the good changes from adopted budget to first interim is the unemployment insurance. If you recall, adopted budget for the 21, 22 year, I keep losing my cursor, but for the 21, 22 year, the rate for unemployment insurance was 1.23%. And that was about 830,000. And so with a lot of complaints to the state, that was significantly reduced to 0.5%. So for us, from 830,000, it dropped to about 340,000. So we have about half a million savings there for the 21, 22 year. Then the future years are also reduced from the adopted budget rate. Calsters and Calpers contribution rates are the same. Workers' comp rate are the same. The CPI, the California Consumer Price Index are, are updated from the enacted budget. And we're using these to project expenditures for like, like our operating costs, materials and supplies and, and other expenditure category. So our total general fund budget at first interim is increased and up to 120, approximately 123 million. And I'll talk about this later on in, in the next few slides, but mostly because of the federal and states, the one-time resources for COVID-19. So again, it remains the basic aid property taxes is our largest funding here, which is the basic aid here and the LCFF supplemental concentration grant. So this is a comparison of our adopted budget and first interim. So the last time you saw the budget was during adoption. And I'm just focusing on the unrestricted revenue because this is where our, our true financial condition is reflected. If you wanted to see the details for the total general fund, restricted and unrestricted, those are in the budget book, in our budget book, I think pages 16 to 21. You'll see the details of each one of these. But for this presentation, I'm just focusing on the unrestricted revenue. So the assumptions that we have for budget adoption did not materialize because we put 2% on the secured only. Secured only did not grow. It actually decreased. So that's the reduction here of 1.5 at first interim. And then local revenue, this is just a state change on the rate. The local revenues, it's mainly because of one new grant that the tech department got, which is the emergency connectivity funding. So that's about 568,000. And then there were some adjustments that we've done on the charter school fees. So that's the unrestricted revenue portion. For the expenditures, our total expenditure for the year is 134.5 million. And this includes all of the expenditures we have planned for the COVID resources here. So you'll see a significant, a significant amount here. But mainly, of course, 73% of our total expenditures is certificated classified unemployment benefits. So the, the next slide again shows what changed from adopted budget to first interim. So these three here, the certificated classified and employee benefits, those are changes in our position control system where we're tracking all the positions that we have with the district. And some positions were changed, either they're not filled and will not be used for the remainder of the year or they're removed from the budget or repurposed. So those are the, the main changes. And if you wanted to see which positions these are and what FTE this are, they are in the budget book. And then the books and supplies here and services and operating, the increase here are mainly due to carryover balances from when we closed the 2021 fiscal year. When we are here in a budget adoption, we haven't closed the books yet. So we did not factor in any quick carryover. So now that we have the numbers, we brought it in, we, we have to put it in the budget to spend it this year because some have expiration date that has to be fully spent. And some of it for this year and others can still be carried over to the subsequent fiscal year. And again, in here, the new grant that we got for tech department, it's also included in this budget here. So that's from carryover plus that new grant and some minor adjustments in, in, in the program. This, the record indirect cost, it's just a result of the changes here. It's, it's like distributing the, the unrestricted expense expenditures to some of the programs. The last item here on the change from adopted budget is a lower contribution to special education program. At first interim, we got additional about 700,000 plus in property taxes for the special ed program from the CEOPA. The AB602 allocation increased, and so we don't need to contribute. You know, we, we made an adjustment. So the contribution also has been reduced. So those are the changes from adopted to first interim on the expenditure side of the unrestricted general fund. So this, this spreadsheet summarizes all the stimulus funding that we got related to COVID. So for the, the total allocation to Redwood City School District is 29.4 million. So some are federal resources and then some are state funding. So the difference basically is more on the accounting presentation because most of these federal fundings are kind of on a reimbursement basis. We have to spend it first and then they, we get the funding. This one, if you're entitled to it, they give it to you. You have carried over. It's earning interest for you. So there's just a difference in accounting methodology. But in terms of the use of this, each one of these grants have specific allowable expenditures that we have to carefully watch. And it has its own timeline for use here. So that's also being considered when we are making our projections and our, our spending plans. Most of this, again, there, there were reports, there were plans that were submitted to the board that Les Wolf had prepared and that was sent to the Department of Education, to the county office of ed and the department of ed. So all of these, which are, you know, those plans are conditions for funding. So those are already complied with. And one of them, the educator effective, oh, the educator effectiveness is not part of a stimulus funding. It's an ongoing program. So what did we do with this money? So for 1920, that's the first year when we, in March of 2020, the very first grant that we got is the coronavirus relief here for 4.6. So when we received this grant, the original time for use was December of 2020. So that's when we were struggling, how we can use that in a very short period of time. But then the, the time for use was extended to May. So we were, in 1920, we were only able to identify 635,000 on the expenditure that qualifies for grant. And so there's a carryover in 2021 of 4 million. So that was also fully spent when we closed the 2021 book. So we are within the timeline for use. And so we don't have to return any money there. So the other one that already expired is the learning loss mitigation state general fund, 616. So that's in the 2021 budget. The same thing with the, the one that helped us with a larger ending balance is this in-person instruction grant. Because this, this, this were used for salaries of teachers that came to provide instruction in person. So we were able to shift the salaries from the unrestricted general fund to this program and fully use it in the 2021 year. So then for this year's budget, for the first interim, we have a total of 13.7 million built into the budget coming from the COVID-19 resources. So this is in accordance with the district's plans. And so if all of these are fully spent as budgeted, then the ending balance for the COVID resources when we close the 21, 22 books would be approximately 6.2 million. So, so the next, what are we going to do with the 6.2 million? So in our district spending plans, the six point, the remaining balance will be used some in 22, 23. And then there's a few items that can still cover expenditure for 23, 24. So there will be two more years of summer school, which is approximately 500,000 per year. And then we have a, a remaining balance allotted for general ed teachers for either independent study or class size reduction. That's 650,000 per year. And then one more year of advanced math teachers budgeted at approximately 280,000. And one more year of the mental health therapeutic counselor, and that's 2.2 million per year. So that would be spent in 22, 23. And one more year for PE teachers at 744,000. The rest that are not identified for anything unforeseen, that are, that we don't have it here, but this is under the superintendent's determination if we are to use the remaining balance of the COVID-19 resources. So that's what we have on the COVID-19. I would like to show you next, our multi-year projection, which is the current year and the next two years. So as I indicated in the budget assumptions, the LCFF property taxes, that's showing this 2% on the unrestricted only. The one for special ed, this is the 4.9 is from CEOPA. So we're assuming flat there, but the unrestricted portion, it has that 2%. The rest are assumed flat. I'm going to go back to the transfer, but the contributions also, the contributions are balancing amount. So whatever's needed for the restricted programs, it's covered from unrestricted general fund. So the certificated salaries classified, so, so no compensation increase there for the next two years, but with the 1.5% step on column. The employee benefits, the rates are adjusted based on the information that we use on the assumptions. And then for, and some of these, you will see a decline. And that's because of those COVID resources that we have put in here in 21, 22. We eliminated those one-time revenues and expenditures in the following year. But there are new ones in 22, 23 for the remaining, remainder of the COVID resources. And then eliminated, eliminated and added as appropriate in the subsequent year. So that's why you're going to see this significant changes. So overall for 21, 22, in adopted budget, you'll see, we have a 2.4 million here transferred because we thought we needed that. But when we closed the books, we have a higher ending balance. So that was eliminated at first interim. We don't need transfer from the RDA funds in 21, 22. But we needed that in 22, 23. These amounts are the same at budget adoption. There's nothing changed there. So that continues. So would it be better? Would it really be like this? You know, a lot of things are still going to change because we, in this, in this, on the staffing, we did not factor in any reduction related to the decline in enrollment. That would be hard for us to make an estimate. So that could be where the savings be. If, for example, you know, in, in the future years, we will have to eliminate positions because of the significant drop in enrollment. So this is kind of the worst case scenario, assuming there will be no changes in staffing. And again, of course, if the 2% here would actually be higher than what we have assumed. So, so the next slide is, are we meeting, you know, it's just an indication, are we meeting our state minimum requirements? So yes, for all years, we have 4.17% here, 4.67 and 3% on the 23, 24. But we are not able to fully fund the board. But we are not able to fully fund the board mandated 3% additional reserve. So here we have our usual, you know, little assignments there for any time we get audited for our healthcare reform and things like that. That could potentially cost a liability for the district. And then the large assignments here are the set aside or amounts earmarked for the unsettled collective bargaining negotiations. So that's what we have on the components of the unrestricted general fund. It's just combined here, but it's really unrestricted ending balance. So I'm just going to show you here, because we have made an assumption that we will be, in the last subsequent two fiscal years, will be drawing from the RDA funds. I just want to show you what the, that fund account looks like. So in, at first interim, we're putting here the ongoing 2.4 million here because we didn't need it for first interim. So we will, we projected to close this year with a 20.3 million balance in the RDA. So if we're going to use those transfers, then we have an ending balance of 5.9 at the end of June 30, 2024. So we're still have about 6 million remaining there, and it could be higher again if our expenditures and revenue projection would be different in actuality. So the rest are just information about the other components of Fund 25 is the developer fees. So we have already done our contribution to all the capital projects. It will be fully spent this year, and so we have almost 2 million left on the developer fees fund. So that's Fund 25, so I'm going to show you all of the district's funds, so we have all seven here. General fund we discussed about, so there's nothing really you know, different here on the child development program, it's still self-balancing, it has a minimal, minimal ending balance, but all revenues and expenditures are balanced. Cafeteria program right now is the same, we have made a significant change here because of the increase in reimbursement rates that we found out after the budget adoption. So you will see a higher ending balance here. We are, we heard about a reduction in the reimbursement rates next years, but with next year, but we don't have the details yet. So we will know again more about it in January when the governor releases its budget for the next year. And then deferred maintenance is just the same, it's here, the need there. And it's, and it's coming from the RDA funds transferred here, this doesn't generate its own revenue. And the building fund, you were like Will presented this evening, we are at the end of the projects. So the expenditures here are increased from adoption, so budget adoption, estimated 36 million. This is increased now because all of the projects are, are projected to be completed this year. And so if these are all done, we are expecting 5.7 million, projecting 5.7 million ending balance. And this is the major component of this is the board reserve that is still being maintained, the contingency fund of 4 million. And then some contingency fund for the, for, for the other pending projects. So it's almost used up and, and, and so as it should be. And so that's very exciting for us to see all of the buildings and modernization projects done. So the rest are capital facilities, one, the developer fees, and I've shown you the components of these. And the last fund account is our special reserve fund for capital outlay, which is there. And just earning interest, the amount here that we have are anticipated planning costs for future facilities projects like the potential workforce housing for the district and other, other small expenses with our consultants. So we're projecting an ending balance there of about 2 million. So this is all district-wide, total revenues 137.7 million, district-wide expenditure is 212 million. And at the end of the first, in this year, we're projecting a total ending balance district-wide of 44 million. So I think that's the end of the financial presentation. The next would be, you know, what are the other items that we'll be processing soon? The stimulus funding requires quarterly reporting of expenditures. The, the third quarter of the fiscal, which is due on January 14. And we have, audit is ongoing in our, the business office. So the deadline for the audit report is extended by the state from December 15 to January 31. So we, we plan to present the result of the audit sometime in February of 2022. And then second interim, again, March 15 cutoff is January 31. And then we go back to the cycle for the budget development, the, the three-year L cap. As soon as we have more information about the state budget in January. So I think this is the end of my presentation. The recommendation is approval of the first interim report with positive certification. So if you have any questions about the report, I'd be happy to answer that.
Any questions? Comments? I was going to see if we have any comment cards, I don't think we did.
Just a quick question. I had seen that the California additional revenues, they, they want to make some of it recurring and some of it one-time funding. Is that what you meant by like if they do it through the COLA, that, that would be like the ongoing funding? Is that the only way they can send ongoing funding to districts or other?
If the pass, they give it like categorical program, like one-time resources. So if they do that, then all school district, basic aid and non-basic aid would benefit from it.
Right.
But if they put them all in LCFF, then we didn't get to, to get any share for that.
Right, right.
Because we are far off to convert, you know, for those districts like Ravenswood, I think they flip and flop. So if the, there's a higher state funding, they become basic aid again, but for us, we are above our LCFF funding by 12% or so, like 12, 15%. So it would be
Got it.
It would, it won't be back to LCFF unless it's really, really significantly high.
Yeah. Yeah, Mike, I just want to add, that's a really good point. And recently, you know, Santa Clara and San Mateo County School Boards Associations have been having those conversations about how do we advocate for resources, particularly as there's a surplus in the state of California? So one of the things that we've been advocating for and CSBA is advocating for is taking some of the, this is money that's outside of Prop 98, actually not within Prop 98. Or could also be within Prop 98, but pay down some of the pensions. Because as you can see, it's a huge percentage, the Calsters and the Calpers for us. And if they pay those down, then that's good for every school district.
That's right.
And we have so many basic aid school districts in San Mateo County and Santa Clara County. And in fact, you know, Superintendent Nancy McGee said pretty soon, probably every school dis, unless the state funding goes way up, every school district in San Mateo County will be basic aid. So anyway, those are the sorts of things that we are advocating for, but you're right, if it goes only into the base funding for LCFF, then we don't actually see it. So anyway, stay tuned for how we can advocate at the state level.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to say thank you to Priscilla and her staff for working on all these reports and for taking the additional workload of all the money that has come in for COVID and keeping track of all that, it's a lot of extra work, so I do appreciate all their hard work and effort. And both Cecilia and I have met with Priscilla and Dr. Baker to review this, so I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I'll echo my thanks too, sorry Janet, I see I just jumped in front of you. The, the slide presentation, or I mean, we say this every time, but the slide presentations that you put together for us are really clear and really, you know, make the changes and the assumptions in the budget, just really easy to follow. I can only imagine how much work it is to, to synthesize that, but I really appreciate it because it, it helps with the understanding. And the, the slide that showed, you know, the explanation of how we're, how the COVID funding is built into the budget. And then followed by the slide that shows what we're going to not be able to spend money on. That really like made my heart jump a little bit. So I'm glad it's in there because that's something that we're going to be feeling in. I mean, I'm not glad it's there, right, but I'm glad that we're like shining a light on it now because that's something we're going to be feeling. You know, in, in two years and just seeing it there reminded me of the stark reality of, of what can be changing when those one-time funds go away. But thank you again for all the work, I really
I don't have any questions and I'll just did what Mike said, because that's what I was going to jump in and say, I just really appreciate your clear presentations, making it really easy for us to understand. So thank you and your team for all the work that goes into these presentations, we really appreciate it.
You're welcome, I'll pass it on to my team, thank you.
Yeah, I want to echo my thanks to, I won't repeat everything that Janet, Maria and Mike said. But I did want to just say, one of the things that struck me as you were doing your presentation tonight is all of these different funds. And particularly with the new funding and the new timelines. I was just thinking, imagine all these invoices coming in and bills being paid. And I'm so grateful for you and your team that you guys are so detail oriented that you're keeping track of all of this for us. So thank you. And it is one of the things they drilled in at the annual education conference is to make sure with all this stimulus funding that we're paying close attention to the deadlines, because the last thing we want to do is not use this money for important things for students, right? So anyway, thank you, thank you, thank you, really appreciate it. Oh, and thank you Maria and Cecilia for being on the budget team.
And Priscilla, just thank you so much, the presentation was, was really good. I, I know you sent it to me beforehand and we spoke about it, but I'm also sending it to a colleague because they, I showed them and they said, my gosh, this is really easy to comprehend, so a CBO maybe, a CBO maybe gave you a call.
Priscilla should give a training, right? Anyway, thank you. All right, do I have a motion to approve the budget?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so Janet made the motion, Mike second, roll call vote please.
Trissy McAvoy?
I.
Trissy Wells?
I.
Trissy Lawson?
I.
Vice President Marcus?
President Diaz-Solcom?
I.
All right, excellent. So we are going to circle back to number 11, which is the discussion on the potential trustee area revisions. I'll turn it over to Dr. Baker.
Yes, and we do have Josh Chisholm and also Will, William Tunic are here with us at this point in time to go over some of the revisions that were spoken about at our last meeting. And I know Jorge had uploaded them to the website so the community could see them too. So Josh, welcome, and I'm going to turn this over to yourself at this point in time so that you can share your screen.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Baker, and thank you, Board, and for your forgiveness for my delay. It's been a wild night and I'm happy to be here. So I hope you can see that screen.
Yes.
Okay, so let's jump right in and look at where we come from and where we are today. This, we met originally back in October to discuss the evaluation. We looked at some maps in November and discussed a few of the changes on those three scenarios that we, we proposed. And here we are on December 15th with a, another public hearing and review of the revisions that we've made. After this, we do have one more meeting scheduled in January. If we need to make additional revisions, we're happy to do that after this meeting. If that's not required, that's okay too, but we are here if, if that's a, a request of the board and the community. All right, just a reminder, these are your current trustee areas. And we'll jump right in, scenario one did not change. The, the only thing that changed here in scenario one was the request for all scenarios to have the schools added to the maps. And so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on scenario one, just to note that that's what happened. We did provide a zoomed-in view here of scenario one. And this slide just, just provides the information, what stayed the same from the previous scenarios, this didn't change. Just as a reminder, the population variance here on this one is the lowest, the 1.4%. And the school points were added to the maps. The slide, just a reminder how to interpret this, we take the most populated trustee area variance and the least populated trustee area variance, add those two together, and that's how we come up with our total variance. Okay, so here's scenario two A. And on this request, there, there was a request down here in what was the southeast corner of trustee area two. There was a request to see if we could put this back into trustee area three. I believe that's, that's what we were looking for and we were also, excuse me, interested in the citizen voting age population distribution of the Hispanic Latino community to see if that would increase that distribution. And so I do want to make a note that on this slide eight, I did find an error on this slide. This slider that you may have in your hands had the original scenario two zoomed-in version, and I highlighted that here. So this is the area that changed in two A. That was the request from the board and the community was to see if we could push that back into trustee area three. And this is just a, a simple explanation, as, as I've already discussed. And here you'll see, I believe, the scenario two in trustee area two, the Hispanic Latino citizen voting age population percentage was roughly 32%. And it's bumped up to 35%. We, the white population did not get below the 50% level with this change, but it was reduced a couple percentage points. On scenario three A, the changes that we made from scenario three, you'll see here in the zoomed-in version, there was a request for El Camino real for, to be the boundary for trustee area one and trustee area four. And so we did make that change. And there was also a request here, I believe this is Britton Avenue, to previously trustee area two, the green had actually crossed Britton Avenue and, and was over on this side. The request was to see how far we could keep trustee area one to the right of Britton Avenue. And so I believe we kind of split the difference is what we were able to accomplish. We weren't able to go all the way over to the existing boundary, but we were able to move over, I want to say, a couple city blocks. And this slide here just explains what I just showed on the map. Here you'll see that the variance changed to 4.9%. And actually trustee area one and trustee area four are really what's driving that. Okay, and lastly, here is just the comparison slide. I, I do want to point out again that this zoomed-in version of scenario two A has been updated to reflect the correct map. It's important to note that the, this was the only error in the presentation, the, the data is correct. The zoomed out, fully zoomed out version of scenario two A was correct, the zoom, zoomed-in version I failed to update. So this, this is the correct map here, and you can see in this western portion here of trustee area three where that has grown from what scenario two looked like previously. And so these are the, the three scenarios, as you can see, scenario one didn't change. If it had, it would be scenario one A. Scenario two and three were updated with the request from the board and the community. With that, I will turn it over for questions and comments.
So Josh, just to confirm then, the scenario two A the scenario two A, the area that you showed that changed, that's from what was on the board packet to what you showed tonight?
Yes, ma'am. So that that's correct. This circle here was this, this image was scenario two in the packet that you had tonight. And the request at the last meeting was to see how far we could push this back into scenario two, which we were able to push the entire thing back into trustee area three as it was original. You'll see here that this slide matches and this slide did not change. It was just slide eight that was updated.
Okay. All right, so I guess the we don't have any comments tonight from the public. Dr. Baker, have you received any comments since these went up and out to the public the last week or so?
I have not. I have not received.
Okay. So Board, I guess the conversation for us tonight is, are we satisfied with the maps that we have, or do we want additional tweaks before they come back to us in January for a final review and approval of the area? And I guess if you have any questions and such too, you could
I have one one question to ask. So the guidance is to be below 10% for population variance. So is is 9% in Oak? Is it a how bad is a 9% population variance if that's the scenario that that we ended up choosing? Because that seems like it's bigger than the other variances.
I'm I'm happy to answer that. Mr. Tunic, if you want to step in, feel free.
Sure, happy to do so. So yeah, I mean, I think as Josh was saying, the 10% below 10% is presumed to be in compliance, essentially. You know, I think we like to usually aim for five to seven, but technically I think below 10 is fine. I think i- if if the board wanted to consider a map that had an eight or nine percent variance, I think we'd want to just be be clear about the the reasons that we board prefers that map. What other, you know, benefits does it providing that that justifies the slightly higher variance? Are there any other questions? So William, let me ask you this. So if we went with the lower variance and we have to turn, I have to, I received an email today from the County Office of Ed, and it seems that I have to submit, you know, the process that we have gone through since the 2020 census and how it may or may not change our trustee areas. So if if we're below that percent and you, I heard you say we probably need to justify why we're going in that direction. No, what what I what I meant is just to say that I think if 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 the board has before two maps and one is 9% variance and one is, you know, 3%. I think, you know, it would be helpful in adopting, if you wanted to adopt the map that was at 9%, to just explain in in whatever form, you know, what the benefit of of the 9% map is, just to explain, you know, why why that's happening so that essentially people don't, you know, make up reasons for it. But legally, it shouldn't make a difference. And from the county's perspective, I think as long as we go through the process and we end up with a map that's under 10%. That should be sufficient. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Baker, I would like to add that we, Mr. Tunic and I will also support that process to provide, it's our standard practice to provide a memo to the county that says, hi, we've we've supported Redwood City School District going through this process. Here's how the process went. Here's here are the scenarios that we created. Here were the public hearings and the public had, you know, that's all written out already in our standard template. We just customize it for how we went through the process with your district. So we can support your effort talking to the county.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks so much.
Yeah.
I do have one question, Alisa. Did we ever decide if we wanted the trustee areas to include at least one school site or not?
Yeah, so I know that you know, at the last meeting, we asked to have the school sites put on the map. So you're right, we could have that conversation if we want to to have that as one of our priorities. You can see with our maps and, you know, it's interesting. Since we did this the last time, we've, you know, closed and consolidated school sites. So some areas that had more schools have less schools now, right? So it's a good, it's a good point of conversation.
I think that's one of the points I wanted to make too, is that if you look at area four, there's no schools in it. And that's because at the time when we adopted it, I believe it was Orion was the only school in that trustee area. And we've since moved Orion, you know, over to the old John Gill campus. I I don't know how that I feel like that would be a significant change to try to adjust area four to include one of the schools. I don't know what your thoughts are, everybody else.
I thought it had area Taft was in area four before, wasn't it? Because I thought it had like two each at least. And to me, I'd like the cleaner lines of scenario two A, so it doesn't look like we're gerrymandering it. But, you know, I mean, I thought it would be nice if we had at least one site, especially since we closed the site on that Orion used to be on. I mean, we represent the whole district as a whole, but I don't know, that was just one of the criteria we used during the first time, so. And I don't know how hard it would be to try and move it back.
I think if we considered shifting, you know, the boundaries, I I'm not sure which school this is, but this one appears to be the closest school to trustee area four, we would have to begin the process, you know, the domino effect of, okay, trustee area five grew, it captured this many people. Now it's now it's too large, so this area needs to shrink. This area grows into this. This area needs to shrink, you know, kind of have this domino effect to shake back out and balance populations. It's not that it's not possible, but there I do think that there would be some there would certainly be some additional work to make sure that all the populations were shifted around again to make sure there was a an elementary or a school in that trustee area.
I mean, one of the things, you know, we talked about before and I was thinking about as we think about schools in different areas is I mean, the good news for us is because we're a district of with schools of choice. You know, we do have students, you know, leaving their little neighborhood and going to a school outside of that neighborhood. And it does seem like we have broad support for a variety of schools, no matter where you live, right? So I think we have that going for us if in fact we have some areas that have more schools than others. Because I agree with you, Maria. I like, I mean, I like two A in that it keeps the different communities together and it doesn't look like a gerrymandering. The only thing I wanted to think about is, it does seem like, I think it was scenario one. You know, some of them give a little bit more weight to the majority minority voting population. And I know that was one of the real intentions of this law was to basically you know, allow for a more diverse group of people to be elected. So but it does then appear to be a little more, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't combine nicely into these groupings in the same way.
I think I also want to say whether or not we have a specific school site within our trustee area. All of us will be within will have, you know, our in our area, there are different neighborhoods that are assigned to different schools. And so that's still within our area, even if the specific school site isn't. And then also just recognize that every year we rotate the handful of schools that are assigned to us specifically. So there's also that. So I think it's for me, it's less important to make sure that there's a certain number of school sites within each trustee area.
And I think the good news is with the three maps we have, it it did it did get the centennial neighborhood together, right, which we had talked about not splitting that up. It got the North Fair Oaks area together, which we talked about. And then kind of that central area, the green kind of, you know, collected it a little bit more. So it seems like we do have three good maps. I don't know if Maria, how I guess, given the additional conversation we've had, or it, I mean, would you like to try to do it a tweak? Although I guess there's the whole domino effect we just heard about. So I don't know if it's even possible.
I mean, everything's possible. I just want to make sure that everybody's okay, especially. I think it's like that's in area four, that there are no school. Well, we do have a school there, but I guess that you know, doesn't have a physical one there at the moment. I really don't mind because as we all said, we represent the whole, we rotate school representation and stuff. So and we have children from our area going to the different sites. So I'm okay with it. I just want to make sure that we're all in agreement on that.
I think the district boundary, the the site boundaries were more, the enrollment boundaries are probably the one that has more a little more influence, even if, you know, optically, it looks more like the school. But I, to tell you the truth, looking at it now, I'm not exactly sure how the new the new map affects that. Certainly trustee area four would be reduced because it doesn't spread the width of Redwood City anymore, the length, I guess, of Redwood City anymore. Even also in its district boundaries. So I think that's okay, because as you said, we represent the entire district, but worth noting.
There's just one thing I wanted to point out on map three A that just kind of stands out to me. It just kind of bothers me, honestly, is in area four. There's that little triangle that's over by five points where El Camino and Woodside are that crosses, yep, that little thing right there. Just doesn't match like the trustee area that with the rest of the trustee area. It's it's a a little stretch of kind of apartments and duplexes and triplexes that I I understand why it got put there as far as making sure the population and everything matched. I don't feel like it fits that trustee area well.
I'd agree with you, Janet. But it popped out to me as well.
Yeah, I think that's the other reason why I was more drawn towards number two because of that, it it just looked weird to me.
So it seems from the conversation among board members, are you, it seems like you're leaning towards two A. That's what I, from what I gathered so far, from the conversations that you're having, you started with possibility of, let's look and see if we can maneuver a bit so that there can be a school for, at least a school for each board member. But then, as Maria and then Alisa did say two, then it start, you start gerrymandering with the with the different trustee areas. And then as Josh said, it's kind of a domino effect if you go in that fashion also. So I, what I've heard you say, it seems like what I've heard, the conclusion that I would come up with, it looks like you're look, really looking at scenario two A.
Yeah, I would say for me, at this point, it's two A or one, given the current maps that we have. I mean, one has that smaller variance.
Right.
The the demographic populations might be you know, a little stronger, but but I do agree two A certainly looks alike, communities are kind of kept together a lot better or ma- or somewhat better. I don't know if a lot better is right. So I think it's just at the end of the day, which I would be swayed. I sort of wish we had additional public comments, you know, that would say, oh, we really like, because last last time it was pretty clear, right? We started to get kind of themes where I think the the community helped us. Right? I mean, I guess the good news is if we're not getting a lot of comments, that means they're probably okay with any of the maps, right?
Right.
So.
Yeah, and I like two A, like I said, for the cleaner lines and that it does keep the neighborhoods together and it doesn't have those little weird pockets like the one that Janet just mentioned. So I think, you know, even if it's got the higher variance, I think it's still legal. It's within the limits. And I think it would serve our community better, in my opinion.
And I I I agree with the previous comments and that's why I was just checking about the variants and if 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 we can, if we're providing compelling enough reasons to say why we're choosing this one over the other one, which I think is keeping the the lines clean, especially along El Camino there. Then, you know, that that's the one that I would prefer.
I agree with that.
Okay, so it looks like two A is the preferred alternative. So I guess at the next, at the January meeting then, Dr. Baker, will you be putting forward a recommendation so the public can kind of see that in case
Right.
any last minute comments coming in?
Correct. I'll work closely with William and and Josh to bring that recommendation forward for two A.
Okay. And then you can also check with Cecilia and make sure she's comfortable with that as well. And okay. I think it met her criteria from the last
It did.
Okay. All right. So any other changes we need? Okay, I'm looking at the board members. It looks like we're good then.
All right, then with Josh and William will be in, I will be in touch. I'll place, let's see if we can set up something for the first week back in January. So I'll send you, send you guys a an email and see if we can't get set on a time and date to meet.
Okay, wonderful. We'll look forward to it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
You, William.
All right, thank you both. Thank you. Good night.
All right. Okay. And I think now we're circling back to board and superintendent reports.
I have none.
I don't either.
Um, Alisa and I both attended a workforce housing committee with Dr. Baker. And we had a policy committee meeting with Wendy Kelly.
And then, let's see, in addition to those, I I attended the parent-led food committee by the parents out of Orion, and they've got a few other parents from other schools as well. And Anna Ligu gave a presentation. And maybe the food, the Child Nutrition Service Committee, you've seen this, and if not, I imagine you'll see it in your January meeting that they're working on inputting all this data to provide nutritional information. And it was actually really amazing, like you can go to the dish and you can come up with the nutritional information. You can even like select, like, let's say your student is having these, you know, five things that day as part of the breakfast and the lunch. And then it'll actually go into a And then it'll actually go into a, um, a summation and you can look at sort of, you know, how many calories they're getting, how much fat, how much protein, that sort of thing. So it's a, it's a tool that actually, uh, the Berkeley Unified School District director who was there visiting that committee said that they use. Um, so anyway, uh, I think that's really good news. It's a lot of work for our food service people to input all that data, but they're doing it. So I think, I think she said by January, it should be up and running. I may have that wrong, but I think that's what she said. So, uh, the, the parents were happy to hear that. She also mentioned that they are eliminating uh, a couple of the more sugary items that the parents had asked to have eliminate. And that's the cinnamon buns and some sweet, sweeter cereals. So they'll be replacing those with some other items. And so they're just sort of working through some of the suggestions. And then I know, uh, Maria and Cecilia, you'll be meeting with, um, the, them and Anna come January. So more on that. They did have, uh, four guest speakers from different school districts who shared a variety of ideas. And if you have a chance, you know, watch the video. Um, it was pretty impressive that, you know, just over time with lots of small changes, they've made big changes. And I know it's sort of the sorts of things we were starting to do pre-COVID. So I think it's a good kind of inspirational reminder that, you know, once we can staff up again, um, you know, there's more things that we can be doing. So anyway, it was a, it was a good meeting. And then, uh, oh, I went, I went over on Saturday at Familias Anidos had, um, I guess it was sort of an outside graduation ceremony, but it, it was one that families could come and they could get, it wasn't like all together per se as much. And they could get their photo taken with their family. They had all sorts of pickup things. They had uh, brand new books that the library had provided and many of them were bilingual. Um, they had done a raffle. So throughout the course as, uh, students and families either did projects or read books, that sort of thing. They got tickets to put in a raffle and they raffled off things like Chromebooks and other sorts of things. So it was a very festive event and I just wanted to say thank you to the Zuno's. They had the whole family out there as usual, the kids and the spouses. They helping out. And thanks to the Redwood City Library who helped, uh, partner as well. So that was nice. And I think that's it. Uh, Dr. Baker.
So just to kind of piggyback on child nutrition services, we did, uh, there was a grant that came out from the state and I showed it to Anna and, um, so we applied for it and it's really easy to apply for this. So in Priscilla, I think it's going to be, you, you can use it either for, um, equipment and also, uh, professional development for CNS. So, um, that went to the state. So it's already there. So I got ahold of it. Let that, let, uh, both Patricia Korea and also Anna know about it and they submitted it. So the state has it. It was really easy to do. So I, we'll, we'll probably get it. It looks like we're going to get it. So, you know, that's moving forward. I, um, spent time prior to the meeting you went to with CNS, Elisa and I, and if, uh, whoever else went, um, with a Mandarin immersion parents. Uh, so, um, and I think I've made comments with, to each of you at our individual meetings. So that will be coming forth, um, at our first board meeting in January, where we're going in the direction with Mandarin immersion and, you know, the siblings and so forth. So, um, as I have meeting with you individually stated, you know, the memo will be lengthy and, uh, there's a lot of other research that's being done to be put into that memo to come up with a, uh, a talk with talking points with you and also a recommendation. Okay. So that's it for me.
All right. Thank you. So information, we got information on the San Mateo County Investment Fund. Was there any questions on that? Okay. Correspondence? Okay.
Just emails.
Yeah, just emails.
And it's mainly about the Mandarin immersion program.
Okay. And then, uh, possible other, um, other business suggested items for future agenda? Okay. Board agenda calendar? Any changes there, Eliana? Okay. And then our next, um, January 12th meeting will be in person. Uh, well, we'll be in person. And then for those that are in the audience, we'll be working out a way. People, people are welcome to come in person as long as you wear a mask and follow whatever rules we have.
Right, right, right. And we're, I'm working very closely with county health and also our attorneys on what that will look like. And we'll make sure that we get that out to the community the first week we get back.
Great. So everybody understands. And then also there'll be a way for people to still, uh, watch virtually and.
Right. It'll be a hybrid. Definitely a hybrid.
All right. Um, Maria, would you like to do the adjournment?
Sure. Move. And happy holidays to everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, let's see. And I guess just, uh, all those in favor. Oh, yeah. I, I guess Mike can do the second.
Second, yeah, second. I, yes, right here.
That way Eliana has that for the minutes. Um, all right. Happy holidays, everybody.